It is 6:30, probably 6:31 by now. No 6:30 still, so we are going to start the evening City Council meeting today. Thank you.
Rules all for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, February 21st, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Ms. Flores, Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Truup, and Witherspoon.
All right, we are going to stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th, 2024 City Council meeting, and bills for payment on February 23rd and March 1st. Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Truup, Witherspoon, Flores.
Is there anyone here for a repository sale? Can you please come forward if you're here for a repository sale? All righty, your name?
Rita Tobin.
All righty, I see the address for you is 2523 Capatrick Road?
Yes.
No, Capatrick Street, sorry. Everything was sent to council. Does any council have any questions? Or comments about the specific property? No? What are your plans, intentions for the property?
We own the property next to it. It's just going to be an extension.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I need a copy of your license.
Oh, sure.
Are you both on here?
You said a copy?
Are you the Bullocks?
Yes.
I can make a copy.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, your names?
Tina Bullock.
William Bullock.
All right, and the property in question is the Wilson Street?
Yes, that's correct.
What are your plans to do with the property?
My plans is to make, elect a playground, sort of like something for when my family comes in town, and we could just get together, because no one's using it, so I figured that would be the best use for it.
And you live near the property?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Does any of the council members have any questions? No? Okay, we can move on to the next thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Hello, please state your name.
Selena McCarter.
All righty, and, hold on. What was your name one more time?
It's Selena McCarter.
Selena? You're not on this list. Give me a second. Yes, you are. All righty, are you the, you want four properties?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty, what are your plans for the properties?
My initial plan is to get them cleaned up, get them nice. There's one out of four that's not in that greatest shape, so I'd like to get that one cleaned up first off. And just get a nice little bit of land. I'm really interested in the town. I really love this area. So I just kind of want to be a part of it.
Do you live near the properties?
No. I spend a lot of time in Erie during the spring, summer, fall.
How will you provide for the maintenance of the property?
I myself will take care of it, and if, say, something happens, I can't make it to Erie to, like, mow the grass, I do have a landscaping company that's willing to do all that for me.
Okay. Does any other council members have any questions? Kathy, go ahead.
Could you repeat what you're going to do with them again? Clean them all up?
Yeah, I'm going to clean them up. There's three of them that are in pretty decent shape. They just need a little debris cleaned up. I don't have any plans to build on them. I would just like to have them nice, presentable, just a little piece of land.
You're not going to store boats and things on them?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there one more person for repository sales? Do we have one more person for repository sales? Do we have anyone left for repository sales? All right, we will move on. It's a public comment. Everyone who would like to speak, can you please line up on the, your right side of the room? And all the cameras, please continue to line up on the left, your left side of the room. Thank you. And when you get to the podium, please state your name and your municipality, and you get five minutes. Thank you. You may go ahead.
Good evening, members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jeff Penske. I was born and raised in an area, and I currently live in Fairview Township. I'm the Chair of the Community Relations Committee of the Jewish Community Council of Erie. The JCC, representing its two-member congregations, Temple Anshehassid and Congregation of Rishalum, as well as the affiliated and non-affiliated Jews of Northwestern Pennsylvania, takes forceful exception to and strongly opposes Erie City Council's proposed Israeli Hamas ceasefire resolution. We consider this resolution to be anti-Israel at best, and encouraging an emboldening of antisemitism at its worst. How can you attempt to make one group happy in the name of diversification, while at the same time encouraging haters of another group? Make no mistake, a ceasefire would not only allow the terrorist organization Hamas the time and means to regroup its forces, but also would embolden Hezbollah and Iran to escalate the current situation to a broader war. Such a ceasefire would serve as a green light for succession of future attempts to mass murder Israelis and threaten Israel's very existence. As such, Israel must continue to restore its deterrence. By considering such an ill-advised ceasefire resolution, council must be aware that Hamas has a long history of breaking ceasefire agreements, including the October 7th, 2023, the various attack that specifically targeted civilians living near the Gaza Strip. These innocent civilians, including young people attending a music festival, the elderly, and even babies, were tortured, raped, and murdered. More than 3,000 lethal missiles targeting Israel's civilians were launched from Gaza, and more than 1,200 Israelis were killed, while 250 were taken hostage. Israel's goal in responding to this horrific attack is to free the hostages and end any possibility of Hamas, a movement committed to the total destruction of Israel and the murder of as many Jews as possible, from ever being able to attack Israel again. The JCC of Erie, we sadly acknowledge that, as in any armed conflict, the loss of civilian life is tragic. In this conflict, the JCC recognizes that while Israel has done far more than any country in the history of the world to protect its innocent civilians, there has nonetheless been innocent loss of life. It is well-known that Hamas terrorists have embedded themselves among Gaza's civilian population of noncombatants. They have further established instruments and weapons of war in hospitals and in schools and in urban population centers, as well as their series of tunnels using their own citizens as human shields. How then can there be a ceasefire with Hamas, as it remains solely committed to the death and destruction of Israel while using a ceasefire to rearm itself? Further, the City Council ever called for the ceasefire in the two years of Ukraine has battled Russian invasion, or when Pearl Harbor was attacked in 1941, or even after 9/11, such empty resolutions would have been absurd and meaningless in a municipal body such as City Council. The same is true for the present proposal. What's more, City Council has remained silent as countless thousands were and are being murdered in Ethiopia, in Syria, Sudan, Darfur, Somalia, and Lebanon. So, we respectfully ask, why take Israel to task for defending itself? This resolution by extension serves to further embolden the antisemitic haters that we have seen increase by triple-digit numbers since October 7th. This is just a feel-good measure. But, if City Council, in its infinite wisdom, truly wants to express the most helpful and meaningful intent, then this ceasefire resolution should be withdrawn and instead replaced by one calling for a complete and unconditional surrender by Hamas and the release of all the hostages. For only then will a significant and permanent ceasefire be possible. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, the amendment was amended, well, the resolution was amended. Friday's resolution was amended, so there's a amended resolution in the back for people who are not aware that it was amended. Councilmember Chuck and Tyler worked on the amendment. Thank you.
My name's Fred Attifra. I live in Erie. I have three things I want to mention briefly, quickly. There needs to be some kind of effort between City Council, the school district, and the county to address the process of handling repository sales. I saw 14 properties sold for 250 a pop to a firm from Massachusetts. This has to, this has to stop. I think our land bank charges $1,000, one of our entities. I think this woman there was very nice, but is she going to turn around and sell those properties? We don't know. I have a request to table to resolve issues around new business, item number seven. Item seven under new business is for the 2021, is to give an urban core recovery $350,000 revolving loan, fund loan to Tempen State LLC Swing Project Incorporated. Please be aware that this entity blocked sidewalk for extended period of time in nonconformance with existing at that time city regulations. There was no advance warning of sidewalk closures at the southwest corner of Tempen State. No warning for pedestrians crossing Kent Street or State Street, or those approaching the corner from the west. A dumpster was placed there, as well as ground disturbance. It took weeks for the dumpster to be moved. When they finally removed that aspect of the closure, the sidewalk on West Tent remained blocked by a fence around the porta potty. After repeated complaints, the fence around the porta potty was removed and sidewalk access was restored. As I have stated numerous times, loans, grants, contracts, et cetera, should not be given to entities that fail to provide sidewalk access. There should be better regulation of how loans are dispersed and how city ordinances are followed. I reported these issues numerous times until they were finally resolved. The pedestrian conditions were unsafe for any pedestrian. The developer, who is also the director of EDDC, who should know better, evidenced no regard for the city's regulations. Now, as to the resolution concerning a ceasefire, we all care about the safety of our families and other families. We all care about the survival of children. We all are all horrified by the destruction, lack of food, water, shelter amenities, and forced relocation of the people of Gaza. We are all horrified by the taking of hostages on October 7th and their safety, and the method of that attack on October 7th. I and many others are deeply concerned that US aid is enabling the continued war in Gaza without improving humanitarian conditions and protecting civil, civilian lives. As a Jewish person raised in the 50s and 60s, I have had to look deeply at my understanding of the situation in the Middle East and recognize the right of the Palestinian people to safety, hope, and homeland. People of my background were raised to hold Israel in high regard without realizing that an entire people were displaced to secure the state of Israel. We were raised to believe, by being shown as a very young child, the pictures of the ovens, the bones, the shoes, the teeth, that my safety was tied to the existence of Israel. I urge the council to support the resolution that was prepared by Councilmember Titus and apparently Nelson. I urge all people of Erie to make their voices heard and to ask for a ceasefire and the withholding of US support until the rights of Palestinians are being respected, and for the US to cease to veto the UN ceasefire resolution. And I might add that there is a lot of misrepresentation of what is being seen as antisemitism right now. Antisemitism is not anti-Zionism. ADL, which used to be an excellent organization, would consider me an anti-Semi for my views. They are saying that because people criticized Israel colleges, that they were antisemitic. That's not the same thing. I urge you to have the courage and humanity to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Art Leopold from Erie, Mr. Mayor, council members. I have a couple of topics this evening. First of all, there is some discussion about changing some zoning laws regarding tiny homes, extra living facilities on properties, et cetera. I just want to make you aware that right now the House is looking at three bills, 1976, 1975, 1836, that all have to do with housing. Some of them have to do with taking office space and turning it into housing. Others address affordable housing, and yes, even the idea regarding the tiny homes and extra homes and the zoning issues. So you might want to refer to those, see what the House is doing, and then formulate your idea and your plans. Second of all, the resolution, it's so difficult. Such horrible things have happened around the world. All war is terrible. And so, you know that I always speak against injustice. I always speak for unity. In modeling the St. Benedictine's Prayer for Peace, I say peace in our hearts brings peace in our homes, and peace in our homes brings peace in our neighborhoods, and peace in our neighborhoods brings peace in our community. Peace in our communities brings peace to our state and our nation, and peace in other nations and around the world. And so, I say dig deep, everyone. Look for unity and look for peace for mankind. Thank you.
My name is Todd Davis. I don't like short microphones, but we'll make this do.
Which municipality do you live in?
I live in Harbor Creek.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a retired United Methodist minister. I've been to Gaza. I've seen the world's largest prison. I've visited dozens of illegal settlements that Israel continues to build on occupied land while saying that it wants peace. I've done graduate work in on the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. I want to tell you what I learned in Sunday School as a little boy in a mainline Protestant church in Erie. My Sunday School teacher meant well. He meant well. But he taught Christian Zionism without using that word. Now, to be clear on words, my argument is not with Judaism. Judaism is a good and wonderful religion to which most of us here are indebted. But when Judaism morphs into Zionism, that gives special privilege, special real estate rights, to certain people of a certain DNA while denying it to others, that is problematic. That is the definition of Zionism. There is Jewish Zionism, and there is Christian Zionism. I'm talking about Christian Zionism, which in my opinion is more damaging than Jewish Zionism. Christian Zionism is taught in most conservative evangelical churches. Christian Zionism says that God desires, it's God's will, for an ethnically pure Jewish state only in Palestine. In their thinking, their thinking, when non-Jews are cleansed from Palestine, then and only then will Jesus return. In their thinking, Christians rapture to heaven, then Jesus will come to establish an earthly kingdom for Jews only. This would be laughable if it were not that conservative evangelical Christian Zionists are a powerful voting bloc. Politicians fear offending their evangelical Christian Zionist constituents, thus political silence, even while watching genocide and the death of near 30,000, mostly women and children. Upon moving to Erie after a career near Pittsburgh, I made new friends, mostly young people in their 20s, in their 30s, in their 40s, millennials. I love millennials. I like the way they think. They don't believe the old lies. Number one, four points. Number one, young people know where Gaza is on the map. That is big, and that is huge. Years ago, when I told my friends that I saw the world's largest prison, they laughed at me. They asked what kind of funny mushrooms I'd been smoking. Now, everybody knows Gaza is a real place. They know where it is on the map, and they know it's real genocide. That's one. Number two, young people left the church. They left for a lot of reasons, one of which is they're just disgusted with the worst politics that are enthusiastically embraced by the conservative Christian church, including Christian Zionism. I'm showing your face. I'm showing you a face, something you've never seen on TV before. This is the face of a Palestinian woman, a Palestinian woman desperately crying for peace that the American bombs stopped dropping on her family. In their thinking, in their thinking, she has no place in God's plan. This is Christian Zionism. The only people of concern to God are... Okay, I'm going to do three and four real quick.
I'm sorry, sir, that's all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Doris Sapola, Harbor Creek. I have just a few words to say. I am for the ceasefire, and my reasoning for that is that I don't believe in more. It has never accomplished anything. These people are suffering, and all I know is it could be you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Zachariah Sharif. I'm here in support of the ceasefire. I did write something, but I'm just going to speak based on what is a genocide? Is the deliberate killing of large number of people from particular nation ethnic groups with aim of destroying and removing that nation? I don't condone what happened October 7th, but when is enough is enough. So far, the gentleman who first spoke, he mentioned 2,000 people. This genocide has been going on over four months. Over 29,000 civilians have been killed, hundreds of thousands injured, millions of people displaced, you know? And we're talking about sending our tax money to... This is no longer about Hamas and all that, you know? When is enough is enough? You know, Erie is considered a welcoming city and sanctuary city. Erie has a diverse population that includes new Americans from Muslim backgrounds in all different areas. And so, we, you know, I'm kind of disappointed in a way because I would think our mayor would speak about this, and I can't speak of stuff that happened before or whatnot. We're continuously to get large population of new Americans from all over the world, but to continue to... People speaking about sending billions of dollars of taxpayers' money? People are appalled when city council raises taxes on their citizens. We know people are appalled when school district raises their taxes on citizens. But we cannot even fund education, but we can send billions of dollars to kill innocent children. And I know this is nothing new. Everybody sees what's going on. Bombing hospitals does not solve the issues. There's not even... You know, you're talking about doctors within the US, doctors without borders, speaking how horrific the situation on the ground is, you know? And we try to reach out to our Jewish brothers and sisters here in Erie. Guess what? We called, we emailed, nobody responded. This has nothing about faith. If you believe in humanity, this is what happened in the Holocaust. It's happened right in front of our eyes, and a lot of people are here to say, think that is okay to continue to kill people? Images of children, images of a pregnant woman being run over? This is ridiculous. This ceasefire needs to happen. I hope that a lot of you support this. And I commend for this action. And again, I never commend, it doesn't matter, two people, one person, any killing of one life is too much, too great. And so, I support the ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mainly want to second everything that Mr. Sharif said. I view this whole thing as an indictment on the political class. Because we're not regular people, we think about election cycles and things like that, and we can be very abstract and very inhuman. I want everyone to think about the facts first. Over 130 children are being killed in Gaza every single day, and this is for the past 137 days. Can we even call this a war? We can call it as an obscenity. Now are we, as Americans, to accept the idea that Vladimir Putin is 200 times nice, nicer to children in Ukraine than how we're committing our tax dollars right now? 200 times more children our money is killing than Vladimir Putin right now? What are we doing to protect our own children? So far, we've been letting our children see this slaughter in real time without any promise or hope of a ceasefire. And again, we're a Class A resettlement center. We're an international city. We have new Americans, including refugees, coming here to build our home and strengthen our future. What are we doing to show them, to prove to them, when our political national leaders have failed, that they haven't just gone from the frying pan right into the fire? This is up to all of us to speak and get this ceasefire statement approved. We are unique. We're one of the 10 counties that decides who the president is. We can say something to the very people who live here, that they belong here, and we believe in human life and children and our future. Again, Putin is killing 200 times less children, whatever awful thing he's doing, than our government is allowing to be slaughtered today. We've got to give hope to our future. The children who are right here, right now, need to see that there are still adults in the room. And this is an indictment on the political class. I don't care if people call them terrorists or if people call them if they're presidents. The political class is responsible for this situation. Regular people have to speak up, leaders, parents, local politicians have to say enough, or we're literally just giving up on our future. We are telling these people, we're telling our children that all our old nasty little private hatreds and prejudices are more important than the existence of the human race. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hayden Schroeder, and I live in Vanango Township. And I want to begin by saying I'm under no misconception that passing this resolution will actually have any material impact on the ethnic cleansing in Gaza. Even the president's ability at this point to tell them to stop is in serious doubt. But it is a symbolic measure that I do believe has meaning and purpose behind it, like they were saying, to show that this is a community that accepts all people. Working in Erie's school district, I see a lot of Arab students, some recently settled, some have been here for a while, and a lot of them do voice support for the victims in Palestine. And I think it does become eerie to show that if it wants to call itself a welcoming city, it just needs to do something to prove that title. If the US, for the sake of its rotten foreign policy, wants to defend an apartheid state, I think it falls onto the people who that government claims to represent, that they need to voice and decry that sort of barbarity. And especially here in Erie. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shannon Keen, and I live in the city of Erie. I'm here to encourage you to vote in favor of the ceasefire resolution, and I would like to thank council members Titus and Nelson for putting this together. Before I begin, I would like to clarify that when I refer to Israel, I am referring to the Israeli government and not the people of Israel or Jewish people as a whole. You can condemn the actions and policies of a government without saying anything about a religion or an ethnic group, so please keep this in mind as I speak. So when this resolution comes to a vote, I would like each of you to take a minute to think about all of the children who have died at the hands of Israel since October 7th. Official numbers estimate that more than 29,000 Palestinians have been killed, including over 12,000 children. To put that in perspective, if you imagine those individuals as inches and were to line them up, it would create a distance of over six and a half football fields. And I don't want you to just think about these numbers, though. I want you, when you're considering how to vote on this resolution, to think about all of the children who will never get to grow up, who will never get to fall in love, or travel the world, or achieve their dreams. They will never get to laugh again, or experience that smell that happens before it rains, or watch a beautiful sunset, or hug their mom. They will never experience life in the ways that you and I have because they're dead. And then, I want you to think about all the children and the families who are still alive in Gaza right now, all of the people who are crowded into what is currently estimated to be the most densely populated place on the planet as they continue to be attacked by Israel despite calling this place a safe zone. And then, I want you to think about the children there who are terrified, who have lost their entire families and are relying on the kindness of strangers in order to survive. Half of Gaza's population is children. Children like Sulaiman Abu Sari, who is a young preteen who was hit by an Israeli drone on his way to gather supplies for his family. He had to have both of his legs amputated. And I don't know if you're aware, but anesthesia is not readily available over there right now because Israel keeps blocking humanitarian aid from being provided to Gaza. So while he's healing in this hospital, Israel attacked the hospital and he had to flee again with no legs. And Sulaiman's dream was to grow up to become a professional soccer player, and now he'll never play soccer again. And then I want you to think about children like Zainah, who is a three-year-old little girl whose family home was hit by an Israeli airstrike. I know that many of you are parents, and so I want you to imagine how Zainah's mom felt as she was digging through the rubble of their living room only to find Zainah's dead little brother. And then luckily, she did find Zainah, but she couldn't take a moment to process the death of her son because she had to look for her first.
If you're not speaking, please take the side conversations outside of the chamber,
Zainah survived after getting abdominal surgery to remove the shrapnel from her three-year-old stomach, and she is currently alive in Rafa right now, but for how much longer? There is nowhere left for them to flee Israel's aggression. You guys ran for city council because you wanted to make a difference, because you wanted to help people, because you wanted to stand up for what's right. And you, more than anyone, understand the importance of local politics and the power that you have here and now. There's a lot of people here today because our hearts are hurting for what's happening to Palestinians, and our conscience doesn't sit right knowing that our tax dollars are being used to fund their slaughter. Calling for a ceasefire is the absolute bare minimum, and that is all we are asking you to do. If you can't stand up against the killing of innocent children like Sulaiman and Zainah, or the unjust murder of their families, then what can you stand against? Keeping that in mind, I implore you to vote in favor of the ceasefire resolution and ensure that the city of Erie falls on the right side of history.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ree Malmiski. I'm a therapist here in Erie, PA. I've been a longtime resident, and I've always seen Erie as being a sanctuary city. Erie has been a great place to grow up, and I've been privileged my whole life. I've gotten to travel to the Middle East. I've been able to go all over the world. I've been able to see many, many different cultures, many different places, and many different countries. Unfortunately, the one place that I went to was Israel, and when I did go to Israel, I saw the inhumane treatment of Palestinians. Palestinians are considered second-class citizens. There's no place like this in the rest of the world. I want people to understand that Gaza and the West Bank, these are people that want to have some semblance of justice, peace, happiness. They want to be able to have their homes. They want to be able to have their businesses. They don't want to feel like that they don't belong in their own country. Unfortunately, the United States of America needs to recognize by us supporting Israel since the Nakba. The Nakba was in 1947. The Nakba has been going on for the last 75 years. Almost a million Palestinians have been killed since then. The thing that really makes me upset is when I was in middle school, I read the Diary of Anne Frank. I cried. I couldn't believe the injustice. And guess what I got to see after I read the Diary of Anne Frank? I got to go over there and actually see what these people were like. And I would turn around to my mom and dad, and I'd be like, why are these people being treated like this? What's going on? And my mom and dad were like, well, Ree, you know, our tax dollars go over there, and we're helping to support this occupation, and this occupation is going on because we're helping them to support the military, and we're helping them to continue the occupation. We've spent almost $318 billion since the establishment of Israel. I think what needs to be understood is that Israel and the people in Israel, even the Jewish citizens that are not Zionist, they want peace. They want a livelihood from the river to the sea. The river to the sea is for Palestinians and for the Israeli citizens. They want to roam free all over, not just one license plate that's gold for the Israeli citizen that is able to roam all over Israel while one set of citizens is only allowed to roam in just a 25-mile radius? It's astonishing to me to see the level of injustice. My sister and her husband went last year to go pray in the most holy site, the Aksa Mosque. The soldiers told my brother-in-law he was not Muslim enough to go into the Aksa Mosque. You, as a citizen, even as an American citizen, really don't have any rights when you go to Israel. You have to listen to what the military officers and all those young soldiers are telling you because they do have total control. They can take over a home. They can take over a street. They can take over a business. If they want, they can totally kill a person without any remorse. And the sad part is, both sides are suffering. The only way to establish peace is through diplomacy, understanding, and love in our hearts. Me, as a Muslim woman, you need to understand we've lived in peace with Jewish citizens, with Christian citizens. I am saddened by what's going on with even my friends there. I've lost so many friends, artists, lovely doctors, nurses, young children, the children. It's so horrifying. My friend and her children were bombed and died, and this was just so sad to hear about, like, all the different deaths. And I hope we have a ceasefire. Please, listen.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy O'Neil. I live in Mill Creek. And the first thing I would like to say is that I'm not here because I hate anyone. I'm here because I believe in peace, and I also believe in human rights. I'm very grateful for this resolution for a ceasefire. I also would like to mention that there's someone that we know who's not here with us anymore, who would have been here this evening. His name was Darnell Stallworth. And as far as what is happening in the Middle East, I know he had a favorite saying, "This is not right." We've heard all about the suffering. I just think this is a beautiful thing that we can show. It's a small gesture for a ceasefire resolution. It's a little beam of light in an ocean of darkness. Thank you.
Members of city council, my name is Melissa Romero from Fairview. I am here tonight to express my strong opposition to the proposed resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. While I understand this is brought with good intentions, I believe it fails to address the complex realities of the situation and risks undermining the security of the people of Israel and the Jewish community. I understand there is pressure demanding a ceasefire, but I urge you to take caution. Think about the unintended consequences and table this resolution. It will not impact the conflict and will only serve to divide our community, marginalizing and endangering the already small Jewish community in Erie, playing into the national debate that has far too often been grounded in spreading misinformation and veers into antisemitism. This conflict in Gaza is not simply a matter of two equal parties engaged in a dispute. Hamas is a recognized terrorist organization who has repeatedly launched unprovoked attacks. October 7th, with a ceasefire in place, Hamas invaded Israel, killing, torturing, raping, and kidnapping innocent civilians from all over the world. Hamas acted with full knowledge of the consequences of their actions and what they would bring and the devastation it would bring on the citizens of Gaza. This was their plan, demonstrated by their tunnels beneath neighborhoods and hospitals, embedding themselves among civilians. Let us be clear: It is Hamas who has put the Palestinian civilians in danger, using them as a shield and tools to further their goal, the destruction of Israel and annihilation of the Jewish people. We know this because the leaders of Hamas have said so, first in their charter and again when the leaders promised to repeat the atrocities of October 7th until Israel is destroyed. This war is horrific and could end tomorrow if Hamas would choose humanity over death and destruction. Palestinians in Gaza deserve better, a government that does not brutally oppress them, ruthlessly militarize their homes, or systematically promote hate and violence in their schools. Hamas cannot be allowed to continue. This war is one Israel did not start and does not want. For the sake of Israelis, Palestinians, and humanity, the world must pressure Hamas to release all hostages and surrender now. If the council is resolved to make a statement about this conflict, despite not doing so for any other conflict around the world, I propose alternatives. Instead of a resolution that places undue pressure on Israel, holding them to a different standard than any other country, I urge the city council to consider a more balanced approach. Or even better, a statement such as, "The citizens of Erie are deeply affected by the killing of innocent people anywhere, and as a community, we stand for peace." I respectfully request city council reconsider the proposed resolution. Passing it would not only be a disservice to peace and stability in the region, but also undermines the principles of justice and security for all. I thank you for your consideration.
Rabbi Rob Morang, Mill Creek.
Please put your signs down. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. This has been an incredibly difficult time for everyone. The people of Israel, the people in the Palestinian areas, this has been a nightmare. Every single loss of life of anybody, of any single, that was quick. Any single loss of life is tragic and cannot be condoned. There are 120 different conflicts around the world, 120 places around the world that people are dying, people are suffering. And yet, we are here talking about this single one, and only this one. And that engenders an antisemitic response by many people. We've seen it in many other places around the country. I am here because somebody stood up and said Hitler should not win. Others are here because they, because somebody said slavery is a bad idea. Sometimes armed conflict is the only way to come to a resolution. And when Hamas chose to break the ceasefire that was already in place, as they had broken the ceasefire, that various ceasefires that had been in place for the probably seven or eight times previous to that, with rockets continually falling on Israel, and Israel building areas and cities with bomb shelters no more than 150 feet away because you're afraid that a Hamas rocket is going to land on your child? And then, on October 7th, you have 3,000 Hamas terrorists pouring across the border specifically targeting civilians, raping men and women, shoving babies into ovens. Israel has no choice than to remove Hamas as a possible threat. It's an existential threat to the entire people. Hamas, as an organization, has pledged not only the destruction of the entire state of Israel, but the murder of as many Jews as they can along the way. They are not interested in a two-state solution. They are interested in a one-state solution that is free of Jews. There is not a single Arab country in the entire world that permits Jews to live and act freely. Between 1948 and 1956, 850,000 Jews, Jews, were expelled from Arab countries. Many of them found their homes in Israel. But my family is not carrying around the keys to the house in Alexandria, Egypt, or the keys to the apartment in Berlin. We went and built a country, a country in which Arabs and Jews and Christians, Muslims, Baha'i, Druze can live and can be part of government. And this kind of resolution, which predominantly calls on Israel to cease because we know that Hamas is not interested in ceasing, they have said this to us. And I want to thank Councilman Nelson for helping to craft and at least somewhat balance this proposal. Because its initial form, it was completely one-sided. How can you have a ceasefire with only one side ceasing? Israel ceases, Israel faces sure and certain death in the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Daniel Bremen. I'm a local licensed clinical psychologist, Jew by birth, father, husband, and son. First of all, I'd like to just, thank you, express my support for the ceasefire and a resolution calling for the ceasefire. I believe that it's important to note that speaking out against Israel and the Israeli government is not inherently antisemitic, and just as speaking out against the US government, if you ever disagree with it, is not inherently unpatriotic, as I believe many people with many different flags around here of political messages would agree. I believe it's also important to note that Hamas was not elected by the majority of people who are currently living in Gaza. Many of the people, the vast majority of people living in Gaza were not even alive during the last election for Hamas, nor has Hamas allowed elections since 2006. So to suggest that Palestinians should be responsible for the actions or belief of Hamas is unjust and unfair. Furthermore, Palestinians are literally second-class citizens within the confines of the territories. Whether or not they live in Israel, inside of Gaza, the West Bank, or outside of them, they are held to a separate military court where they have no chance of defense or release. Children are no exception to this. A number of kidnappings have been committed by Israelis and Israeli forces in the West Bank as well. While Gaza is the focus, people are not safe if they're outside of Gaza. An estimated 500 of those kidnappings have been children. Fifty-seven of them have been journalists, 36 of whom still remain imprisoned, and 21 of which are held in administrative detention without any charge or trial. Prior to the horrific events of October 7th, the number of administrative detentions of Palestinians by Israeli forces was at a 20-year high prior to October 7th. And those detentions can be renewed indefinitely with no legal recourse. So I think it's important to call back to what the rabbi said. First of all, October 7th was a horrific event. And yet, also, the rabbi says sometime armed conflict is the only way to come to a resolution. There was no discussion of a Palestinian state prior. I do not believe those actions were right or just. I wish they had not happened. I wish that children and adults who have not gotten a chance to vote for their government were not being bombed and murdered and kidnapped and starved and treated like second-class citizens and currently worse than. But those things are all true. They have been true for decades, and as far as we can see, they will be true. About missiles being dropped on Israel, the missiles that are being launched by Hamas are nothing in comparison to the strength or power of the bombs and missiles being dropped and launched on Gaza, on people who have no ability to leave the border. Furthermore, Israel has not been making an effort to distinguish between civilians and combatants. In fact, some of the hostages were shot and killed by Israeli forces while they were shouting in Hebrew, "We are unarmed." Since October 7th, Israeli forces have detained more than 2,200 Palestinian men and women. Furthermore, Palestinian prisoners are regularly subject to torture, withheld food, water, and medication. Reports of this have been made by both prisoners as well as former IDF soldiers. I think it's important that while we, it is very easy to focus on the horrific events of October 7th, we not ignore the horrific events Palestinians have been subject to prior to that date and since then, currently experiencing a genocide as well. Yes, someone stopped slavery. Someone spoke out during the Holocaust. Someone needs to speak out now. I hope it is all of you.
I would like to start by giving some perspective.
Can we just have your name and the municipality that you live in?
Yes, my name is Rae, and I live in the city of Erie.
Thank you.
So, like I said, I would like to preface with the fact that Rafa, a swath of near barren agricultural land where roughly 1.5 million Palestinians in Gaza were displaced to and currently reside, is slightly less than 25 square miles. In comparison, Erie County is just over 1,558 square miles and has a population of slightly under 951,000. Missiles have been dropped on tents, and gunboats have opened fire from the sea on where Palestinians are living like sardines in a tin. Over 100 aid trucks have been blocked by Israeli civilian settlers from entering Gaza with things like food, water, and medicine. We need a ceasefire because over 1,000 people in Gaza have been killed every week since the International Court of Justice ruled that Israel was plausibly committing genocide three weeks ago. Hundreds killed daily by bombs, by drone strikes, by soldiers' bullets, and by a lack of access to food and water. We need a ceasefire because people shouldn't have to wake up to the news that 100 members of their family have been killed while sleeping in their beds or going to get bread for their kids or lying injured in hospitals. People should be able to have access to food that isn't through the military that's blockaded them by land, air, and sea for 18 years. We cannot allow our humanity to be stripped away. We cannot allow our city to say no when it is asked if bombing children's schools and maternity wards and universities is something we want to stop. Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Brad Ford, and I live in the city of Erie. I stand here as a father, husband, Erie resident, and a Jew. My original public comment was to ask that the city not vote for this resolution. One of the worst parts of humanity is our propensity for violence. No resolution will stop the war nor the killings, but locally, it can put my daughters and my fellow Erie Jews in danger and give others more a justification for antisemitism. If we could not have found some type of common ground between all of us here, this situation could have been very different, and I'm thankful that the amendments were made. The resolution before was amended, pardon me, the resolution before amended was a vote for the oven and gas chamber jokes that my daughters hear and are told regularly by their schoolmates. This would have been an empty vote to stop the violence 9,000 miles away and help fan the flames of hate here. If anyone here thinks I'm wrong, I stand for your right to do that, but I also urge for you to find a concrete, non-performative way that will actually benefit the Palestinian people. Donate your time, your money, start a protest, make art. But to write and support words in a resolution that could have been used against a Jewish minority in the city is irresponsible and dangerous. I had a friend tell me that this resolution is just in spirit, and I should not care. But broad, general words that were used in the original statement are the root of racism, antisemitism, and anti-LGBTQ hate in this world. Words matter, and changing those words to reflect the much more complex situation. We cannot make change if we don't actually talk to each other. I ask that we always try for public discourse. This is a democracy after all. Thank you.
Good evening. Our speakers tonight have been very
Our speakers tonight have been very eloquent, and I'm not going to say anything that you all don't already know.
Can I have your name and the municipality that you live in, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Patty Bullerats. I'm a lifelong citizen of Erie, specifically the city.
Thank you.
Yes, so, tonight I want to come before you, really to plead with you as a city. I come before you to urge today for your support for a ceasefire in Gaza. It has been 40 weeks of unrelenting suffering and loss. Loss of life, loss of limbs, loss of family members and homes, and most egregious, the loss of human dignity. It seems imperative that the well-being and safety of civilians be prioritized immediately. In order to achieve lasting peace in this region, we must demand a ceasefire. The cycle of violence only perpetuates suffering and trauma. A ceasefire gives the space and opportunity for lives to be saved and dialogue towards a peaceful solution to begin. Erie has long been recognized as a welcoming, safe city for immigrants and refugees since 1919. My husband, my children, and I spent years working alongside Erie citizens without homes. When we asked many of them, "Why do you stay in Erie rather than move to a warmer climate?" Many of them shared it was the kindness and the support that Erie gave. We know what the basic needs are for individuals that are looking to rebuild and start healing. We know what it takes to support newcomers as they look to build peaceful lives that are filled with dignity. I urge you to use your influence to advocate for an immediate ceasefire and to support initiatives that promote peaceful dialogue, understanding, and reconciliation. As a lifelong Erie citizen, a mom, a wife, a daughter, a social advocate, and a volunteer, I bring this plea to you this evening, not with an ounce of hate. There is, it's never okay to take life or to treat life this way on either side. This plea is from a deeply grieved heart for those that are suffering and went only for the people of Palestine and Israel to live in peace with the same rights and the purpose that each and every human being deserves. Thank you for your time and your attention to this urgent matter.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Gross. I live in Northeast Borough, and I work out of offices in the east side of Erie and in downtown Erie. Thank you for your time. Good evening, Council President Flores, members of the Erie City Council, and Mayor Shember. I speak to you tonight about the matter of human rights and civil rights, and especially the lives of innocent bystanders being destroyed by the relentless military action of the nation of Israel. If we recognize the right of Israel to defend itself, then we must also recognize the importance of the lives of all Palestinians. Who were the Palestinian signatories to the Balfour Declaration of November 1917? At that time, the region of Palestine was a possession of the Ottoman Empire. In fact, there were no Palestinians who agreed to hand over the land that they lived in. If we recognize the importance of the lives of the Palestinian men, women, and children suffering from the overwhelming military action of Israel, then we must endorse a call for a ceasefire and restore an authentic, peaceful, and just solution to the eons of conflict in the region. President John F. Kennedy once said, "Victory has a thousand fathers, but defeat is an orphan." Change is the law of life, and as we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them," end quote. It is the Palestinian people of today who are showing the world the value of human life through their will to survive. I urge this city council in its deliberation, prayer, and debate to show out its faith in the value of both Israeli lives and Palestinian lives by joining the growing chorus of organizations and people who endorse a ceasefire in Gaza. In closing, I am compelled to quote Haile Selassie, the 20th-century leader of Ethiopia, who saw his own nation racked by outside invaders and conflicted with internal division. Quote, "Leadership does not mean domination. The world is always well-supplied with people who wish to rule and dominate others. Until the philosophy which holds one race superior and another inferior is finally and permanently discredited and abandoned, everywhere is war. And until there are no longer first-class and second-class citizens of any nation, until the color of a man's skin is of no more significance than the color of his eyes." We call for the Erie City Council to endorse a ceasefire in Gaza immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Ryder. I'm a citizen in the city of Erie. As a trans person, I am not a stranger to my pain being used as fuel for someone's argument. A common one I've heard is that as queer and trans people, we shouldn't call for a ceasefire because of the hypothetical, "What would they do to people like us in Palestine?" And to that, I say, "Do you know the name Nix Benedict?" Nix was a 16-year-old high schooler in Oklahoma. They were trans. On the 7th, on February 7th, they were beaten in their school bathroom. No one even called an ambulance for them. They died the next day in the hospital. Queer people are already being murdered here at home. That is our reality, not a hypothetical. We don't need to think up hypotheticals when the reality is that queer people are killed over here in this country. Which leads me to my question. Why are we speaking of hypotheticals when the reality is that 30,000 people are dead? When Hamas themselves, and I'm not like defending them or October 7th or anything, I'm just speaking facts here. They have offered to work with Israel for a ceasefire. They have. Netanyahu has denied that, and then he has told the Palestinians, the Palestinians in Rafa, that they would be safe there. Meanwhile, the Israeli army is bombing, sniping, they are slaughtering people for the sin of seeking out clean drinking water. The United States supplies Israel with the tools they need to carry out a genocide, and there is no denying that this is genocide when hospitals in Gaza that have been bombed, which is a war crime, there is no denying that this is genocide when these, when charts in these hospitals read W-C-N-S-F, wounded child, no surviving family. In 30, 40, 50 years, they will, they will teach the children of our future about the mass slaughtering of Palestinians, how the United States stood by and watched as five months of genocide happened under our watch because of our negligence and cruelty. My question to you is that, do you want to be the people they list as complicit? Do you want the blood of Palestinians on your hands? Because once it is there, it will not wash off, and you will die knowing that you could have done something and you didn't. Stand on the right side of history, call for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Salaam alaikum, greetings of peace to everyone. Before I start with what I wanted to say, I would like to clarify one thing is that 1,400 years ago, when the Prophet Muhammad was in Arabia, he lived side by side with Jews, and the Jews had the full protection of the Muslim community in Arabia. To, in the present day, today, in a lot of Arabian countries, there are Jews who are residing there, including a large population in Morocco and also Jews in Palestine itself.
Can we have your name and the municipality you live in, sir?
Akil Sayad, Milk Creek.
Thank you.
And my message is not a political statement. Rather, it's a humanitarian message. We are not against the Jewish people of the Jewish faith. We are opposed to the actions of the Israeli government conducting this genocide. During World War II, 500,000 women and children were evacuated from the war areas. In this current genocide, not one woman or child has been evacuated from Gaza. This is a deliberate ethnic cleansing of 2 million people and attempts to eliminate generations of an entire community by the Israeli government. We might wonder, what a world would be like without Hamas? Because a lot of people feel that Hamas initiated this. Well, the West Bank is without Hamas. Hamas is only in the Gaza area. In, with the West Bank alone, over the past 10 years, 10,000 people have been murdered by the IDF in West Bank when there is no Hamas there. Just over the past four months, hospitals and schools and colleges have been bombed and destroyed, which is against UN and Geneva Convention. 30,000 killed and 10,000 children murdered, and mothers and fathers attempting to write names on their children's limbs in case bombs blew them apart. This is what we are witnessing today. Millions have been forced to flee to Rafa and live on the streets. How many is 2 million people living on the streets? We all recently watched the Super Bowl a couple of weeks ago. That was around 100,000 people in that stadium. Think about that 100,000 stadium, how big, how many people that was. Now imagine 10 times that amount, being homeless and not having access to food. Aid trucks have stopped going to Gaza because of the perils that are, are there imposed there. Just recently, a couple of days ago, I was reading on CNN that doctors were forced to leave the hospital where they were treating patients in Gaza and forced to stand outside and undress in front of Israeli soldiers, and were forced to stand outside for several hours before a few of them were allowed to return back and treat their patients. This just happened a few days ago. The article is on CNN. We all witnessed that for the first time in Bethlehem, there was no Christmas. I'm sure you're aware of that. There was no Christmas this year in Bethlehem, the birthplace of Jesus Christ. And the chief priest of Bethlehem, he said that if Jesus were to be alive today, he would be with the Palestinian people, and if he was to be born today, he would be born under the rubble in Palestine. What did former President Jimmy Carter say about Gaza when he visited? He called it the world's largest open-air prison. What did Nelson Mandela call Palestine? He said apartheid in Palestine is the worst that he ever endured, even more than South Africa. Last month, we recognized MLK Day. Where would MLK stand in this situation? In a time like this, where would he stand? This is Black History Month we're going through currently. Where would a person like Malcolm X stand in a situation like this today? In Israel, they have free health insurance. There's very, no homelessness there in Israel, and they have free education. Look at our problems we're in, we're having right now. You know, look in the streets of Erie. You drive around Peach Street or Praize, you see a lot of homeless people out there. You see problems with food, food pantries, soup kitchens. We have problems with higher education paying for loans. Why doesn't the money stay in our country so we can avoid these problems in our own country? The streets are wide, and the road is long, and there will be challenges and difficulties along the way. Now is the time to be bold and steadfast and to make a courageous statement. We will not stand for apartheid. We will not stand for genocide. We will not stand for repression. And we will not, and we will stand with Palestine, and we will support this resolution through, brought forward by the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty Wachukwu, Erie, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
It brings me great sorrow and pain to hear people say that it is our human nature to be violent. That is the nature of white supremacy. Do not put that on all of us. White supremacy has many faces. As a black American and African, I know these faces intimately. But I am ashamed to say that until October 7th, I did not know the name and face of Zionism. Why is it that, when black and brown people are being killed, that we can be okay with it? Why is it that we have to wait for our lives to be saved? Colonization and imperialism has impacted me personally and my family. During the 60s, my mom was born in Ghana, and my dad lost his father and two brothers during the Bejafar War because of US and British imperialism and genocide. So now, in my 30s, I cannot believe that I am witnessing yet another genocide. You bring up Congo and Sudan and Tigray and all these other places as a reason of why we can't call for a ceasefire today for Israel. What are you doing today about those situations? Don't speak on the names of Africans if you're not doing anything for it. Degenerates size around the world are internet-connected, and they're all centered on greed, whether it's because of oil, whether it's because of the cobalt and coltan in our phones. People should not be dying for money and profit. And at the end of the day, this, we can call it whatever, but the onslaught of the attacks on Gaza is a real estate grab. And it's a long game that has been played for almost 100 years to rid the region of the indigenous people that exist there. And today, we're standing and sitting in Erie, which was indigenous lands of Native Americans. And hundreds, almost 400 years later, we're still participating and continuing the violence of white supremacy. How can you condone violence while saying, speaking of peace? It's sickening. It really is. How can you support nationalism from a state outside of our own? As a 30-year-old, I'm struggling to think about buying a house. We have student debt. Everything's expensive. But we have billions upon billions upon billions of dollars to send overseas to kill people who are my peers and younger and people who would be my elders, all for greed. It's a shame and it's sickening. But I believe and have faith in humanity. I have faith that we can overcome and love and work out of love and action. And I call city council to act from that place of love and do not act from a place of hate. Hate that would tell you to be okay with killing almost 30,000 people. So before I leave, I believe education is elevation, and ignorance allows this kind of violence and destruction to go on. So I'm gonna share some books that I think people should read. Orientalism by Edward Said. The State of Israel Versus the Jews by Sylvia Seiple, if you're confused about the difference between Zionism and Judaism. Except for Palestine: The Limits of Progressive Politics by Mark Lamont Hill and Mitchell Plentik. Palestine Walks by Rajah Siddat. And the Hundred Years' War on Palestine. I call you to educate yourself on not only the conflict on Palestine, the conflict in Congo, the conflict in Sudan, the conflict that happened in Nigeria that infected my own family. Stop condoning violence. 30,000 people, almost, almost 30,000 people dead is sickening. And as a child who grew up reading Anne Frank's diary, as a child who watched Hotel Rwanda and couldn't think, couldn't believe that these things could happen during my lifetime, I hope that when I was adult and the time came for us to stand up and speak about it, that all of us would speak in collective action to stop these things. And so it's a great disappointment to be in this reality where people condone this kind of destruction and violence. So again, I'd hope that city council goes ahead and passes this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Milk. I live in the city of Erie. There's already been a lot of speakers, so, you know, I'll shorten what I, what I had prepared. But, you know, I'm here to speak in, in favor of the resolution. I read the resolution at this point. I don't know what it looked like first draft, but the second draft, you know, pretty clearly says, you know, treat humans like humans, ceasefire, mercy. And it behooves us to loudly denounce mass murder and the violent displacement of entire populations, especially at such precarious a time and the precarious political atmosphere that the, the world is witnessing all about it. that the world is witnessing all about it. And you know, we should denounce mass murder and violent displacement of entire populations, regardless of the heritage of the victims or the perpetrators. Passing this revolution will do little to impact the lives of Erieites at this point. But it does allow us to declare to our national leaders that we in the city of Erie love mercy. But there are still those who complain or, you know, argue against this resolution. And I'm not sure if they can really be swayed by any of our points of view here. And some may ask why we speak about such a thing now, now that it's Israel attacking Hamas or attacking Palestine, rather. And the answer is simple. It's because this spat of violence was extremely shocking and horrifying. It's also well documented and it's ongoing. It's at least as high-profile as Russia's invasion of Ukraine. Of course, in that case, you know, in this case, Israel was provoked by a devastating slap from Hamas. You know, there's arguments that the retaliatory, you know, Holocaust, perhaps, is necessary for Israel's existence. But I don't believe it is. I don't believe that destroying this other nation is the only way forward. I don't think destroying these other people, decimating them entirely, is the only way forward. There must be a way for mercy to move forward. What the IDF are doing under Benjamin Netanyahu's leadership is deeply amoral and abusive and unjust. So now it is all of our duty to speak up against violence in solidarity with all civilians, with all humans, regardless of heritage. And to all those in leadership positions, please choose mercy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brianna. I live in Erie. I'm 25 and I'm a healthcare worker. I've been in the field since I was 18. My whole life, my passion has always been taking care of others, helping them heal during their darkest moments and advocating for them when they don't feel seen or heard, no matter their age, race, religion, or beliefs that may differ from my own. With that being said, I'm here today to ask you to join me and many others to call for an official ceasefire in Palestine, to push for the decolonization of Palestinian land and to support Palestinian liberation. The images I've seen will haunt me forever. A man carrying his loved one in bags, in pieces, babies dying in the NICU because electricity had been cut off, children starving to death because aid had been cut off, human beings screaming in agony with singed flesh from white phosphorus attacks, a war crime. Children in so much pain, they can't even scream at all, just suffering and dying slowly in complete silence. Now orphaned children mourning the massacre of their entire family. Rubble painted red with blood. Surgeons, nurses, and doctors working tirelessly to save lives and repair wounds and severed limbs, all while anesthetics, all without anesthetics and dwindling medical supplies, putting their own lives at risk because the IDF is bombing hospitals and schools and places of prayer. Another war crime. In fact, there is no safe place for the nearly 2 million displaced Palestinians, the innocent men, women, and children to go at all. They've been blocked and caged up like livestock, waiting for their turn to die. Israel has pushed Palestinians further and further into corners of their very own land, forced occupation. Move or die. So they move and they're still being slaughtered. Not only am I sad for all the suffering Palestinians have had to endure for decades, not only am I ashamed because I live in a city, in a state, in a country that supports this violence, and let me be clear, by not calling for and demanding a ceasefire in Palestine, you are inadvertently supporting this violence. But I am so angry. I am angry at the world and its so-called leaders. I'm angry at our elected officials because somewhere along the way, they forgot that their job is to serve the people, not just their own self-interest. And I'm angry that this country is sending billions of dollars from taxpayer money to Israel to fund this genocide, rather than investing into our own communities. How much blood needs to be spilled before you feel sad, before you feel ashamed, before you feel so angry that you decide to do everything in your power to put an end to this? This is madness. The madness has got to end. Israel has shown zero regard for human life and ignored international law like it doesn't apply to them, with zero repercussions for its actions. This conflict is not Israel versus Hamas war. This is not war at all. This is total annihilation with no mercy. This is ethnic cleansing. This is genocide. We collectively as a city need to call for ceasefire and push for decolonization of Palestine and for Palestinian liberation. Other cities are finally speaking up and calling for a ceasefire, and I have faith that Erie will stand in solidarity with them, with Palestine, and with humanity. It's one word, two syllables, ceasefire. It's the difference between having some humanity and having none at all.
Hello, my name is Michael Pitzkony. I'm from Erie. In calling for a permanent ceasefire, which should be the first step of many in the quest for Palestinian liberation, one should bring to light statistics and data. We should continue to talk about how 70% of Gaza's population consists of women and children, how Israel has purposely killed 29,000 civilians with an additional 8,000 presumed dead underneath rubble. We should talk about the approximately 70,000 civilians that Israel has purposely injured, the 1,000 now without limbs, the 19,000 newly orphaned children. We should talk about Israel's purposeful destruction of 70% of all housing units in the Gaza Strip and what can now be viewed as the most destructive bombing campaign in modern history. We should talk about how Israel has raised farmland and blown up universities, cultural buildings, mosques, and churches. We should talk about how Israel has laid siege to multiple hospitals, leaving patients to die with no supplies, leaving babies to decompose in incubators, how they purposely kidnapped and assassinated doctors, including specialists that if it was still working, would be able to save lives. We should talk about how Israel has bulldozed cemeteries, how they bulldoze displaced civilians, sheltering in tents, ignoring their screams as they continue to flatten encampments. We should talk about how there were many credible reports of mass executions of entire families in Israel. We should talk about how Israel is purposely starving and creating a famine in Gaza. And when a few trucks, aid trucks do make it in, especially to the north of Gaza, where civilians are now starving to death, Israel shoots, terrorizes, and kills those looking for any ounce of food they can find. We should all talk about how Israel's snipers have shot toddlers in the head as their families tried to find a safe haven when there were simply none left. We should talk about how the Israeli real estate agency, posting plans to build settlements on the ruins of Gaza, or the Telegram channels run by the IDF dedicated to celebrating the torture and mutilations of Palestinians. Yes, there should be an immediate permanent ceasefire, but that should only be a starting point, and I refuse to call what is happening in Palestine a conflict or war. I refuse to use Western hegemonic, racist, colonial language when describing a genocide being documented in real time and what is now over 75 years of displacement, murder, systemic torture of Palestinians. What is currently happening is in plain view, and the settler colonization of Palestinians has always been in plain view. It was in plain view when the Balfour Declaration was delivered. In the words of Riyadh Maliki, Palestinian Minister of Foreign Affairs, "Palestine was not a land without people. There was life on this land, political, culture, social, and religious. It has schools, universities, cinemas, families, and communities whose lives were impacted by a promise made thousands of miles away over 100 years ago." It was in plain view during the Nakba of 1948, where 700,000 indigenous Palestinians were ethnically cleansed from the land, no longer permitted to ever return, and many thousands were massacred. It was also in plain view when one of the founders of Zionism, Seve Japiti, wrote in his essay, "The Iron Wall," quote, "The native populations, civilized or uncivilized, have always stubbornly resisted the colonists, irrespective of whether they were civilized or savage. This is equally true of the Arabs. We may tell them whatever we like about the innocence of our aims, watering them down and sweetening them with honeyed words to make them palatable, but they know what we want, as well as we know what they do not want. They feel at least the same instinctive jealous love of Palestine as the old Aztecs felt for ancient Mexico and the Sioux for the rolling prairies. Zionist colonization must either stop or else proceed regardless of the native population, which that it means that it can proceed and develop only under the protection of a power that is independent of the native population, behind an iron wall which the native population cannot breach." End quote. It's still in plain view as today, as the United States, the main supporter of this current genocide, as we sit in a city named after indigenous peoples who were exterminated by colonization, acts like it has any credence whatsoever to have a say in what Palestinians deserve or what they must do in the future to deserve basic statehood or recognition, when Joe Biden admits that he would have to recreate a state of Israel if one did not exist to defend our interests in the region. Israel is one of the most well-equipped armies in the world with full backing of the United States as they bomb children trapped in a literal concentration camp. This cannot be normalized. Palestinians have no state, they have no autonomy, they have no sovereignty, they have no rights, they have no assurance of security and to not be terrorized by Israeli settlers nor the IDF. I refuse to normalize or equivocate in the oppressed and the impresser. Palestinians deserve an end to the 17-year siege of Gaza, making it the world's largest open concentration camp. Palestinians deserve the release of all their political prisoners held illegally under administrative detention by Israel, many of whom are children. Palestinians deserve an end to the legal, military occupation, and racist apartheid system. Palestinians deserve a full right to return and full reparations. I am honored to be here with those from the community who support the Palestinian people and support people of all beliefs, Jewish people, Muslim people, Christian people. I hope that one day, all of these people can once again live in peace. I am proud to join together in this community in a night of solidarity, and I hope to continue work with all of you in order to make the city of Erie true to its name as a welcoming city for all. Please, ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Hiba and I live in Erie County. I'm here to call for you guys to vote for a ceasefire. I want you to hear me when I say that it is part of your, most essential part of your humanity for you to call for a ceasefire. Women and children are dying. The men who care for them are dying. The women who are pregnant, who are without any type of health care, any type of access. Access. Hello? Why isn't it working? Okay. Without access to health care are going to be having children miscaraging from the stress because of this, of these bombings that Israel is doing on the Palestinian people. Muslims, Jews, and Christians lived in peace in Palestine long before Israel came, long before World War II began, and it is a part of the Islamic law for them to be living in peace. We are demanded by our God to make sure that the Jews and the Christians have a place in our societies. For anything other than that to be said, it is a lie. I want to tell you a story about a man who lives in America. Oh, let me, let me mention, I'm born and raised in America. I am an American. I am Muslim. I am Syrian. Syria is directly next to Palestine, so you should know. Directly. And a part of Syria was lost when Israel took over Palestine. But let me tell you the story of this man who lives in America and has raised his children in America. This man was an infant when his mother returned to his home and was not allowed to enter. She was not allowed to take a blanket back from her own home because, because the refugees, they had sheltered, had taken over their home, and not allowed them back in. Those refugees were Jews. Those refugees were Jews, refugees from the German Holocaust. This is a direct result of the Holocaust in Germany. This entire matter is a result of white people's actions in Germany. Now, America stopped that one. Why isn't America stopping this one? Why is America supporting this Holocaust? I'm asking you. I am seriously asking you because I don't understand it. That man was Mohammed Hadid, the father of Bella Hadid and Gigi Hadid, as you may know them in pop culture. If you have not seen what is happening in Palestine, I urge you tonight, or in this second, I don't care if you do it while I'm talking, to Google Palestinian genocide and watch the thousands of videos that will come up. And there are thousands of videos that will come up tomorrow. Why? There are new ones every day. I watched the boy in the striped pajamas as a child on the living room floor with my family. My mom was there, my two sisters were there. We watched it. We sobbed with that mother. But I'm gonna tell you why that mother, at the end of the movie, was the one sobbing and not the Jewish mother. The mother was white. She was a Jewish soldier's wife, and her son was mistaken for a Jewish boy, and he was killed in a gas chamber in this movie. They made that boy white because they wanted you Americans to feel his pain, to feel that woman's pain, to identify with her. So I urge you to imagine those Palestinian children are white. Some of them are blond, some of them are blue-eyed, some of them are Aryan. I urge you for a ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Nick Wellman from Washington Township in Erie County, and I come here to demand a ceasefire on behalf of the innocent blood that has been shed in Gaza under the deliberate execution of a genocide that is unfolding as we speak in this present moment. And I make these demands because it is the responsibility of any and all leaders in this world, whether it is as small as someone in a conversation with their peers or as big and present as an official government body, to advocate for the immediate redress of atrocities that are taking place against our fellow human beings. And I reaffirm that statement by pointing out that we have an opportunity at this present moment to call for an end to this atrocious genocide as both people, fellow human beings in this city, in this county, and as people who are in power to make these statements and to be truly heard on behalf of not only their people, but those that they are under, those that they claim to serve. So with that, I reaffirm that our demand is for a ceasefire in Gaza and to allow Gaza to live. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Molly Brechtel, 820 Cranberry Street. I'd like to pause for a moment of silence for all innocent human lives lost. We all share a common humanity, shed red blood, and mourn our dead. We are not here tonight to discuss politics or religion. We're here to discuss a shared value of dignity and respect for all human lives, what unites us, not what divides us. Something that unites us, that my heart's been moved tonight, that I'd like to talk about, is moms. Currently, 700,000 people are starving in Gaza. Mothers without access to milk are having their babies suckled. Mothers without access to milk are having their babies suckle on dates. Fifty thousand women in Gaza currently are pregnant, about to deliver. Deliver a child running from bombs without food, without medication, and without any safe space to go. I'd like to talk about the Israeli moms that are protesting in Tel Aviv to bring their children home from Gaza. I'd also like to talk about the retired nurse that's with us tonight, a mom that's never protested before a day in her life, but recognizes and the babies taken off of incubators in hospitals, that we have a shared humanity. A lot of folks are saying this isn't a local issue. It absolutely is. It has to do with our moms. I spoke to a Palestinian mother yesterday from Rafa that described the feeling of being paralyzed, of not being able to take care of her daily responsibilities, which include taking care of her children and her home. I'd like to talk about the moms that aren't sleeping at night in this city. They're having a lot of mental health and physical health symptoms. This is a local issue. We've spent, from this city alone and federal taxpayer dollars, 1.5 million dollars in federal aid. So this is also about the moms in this city that are living paycheck to paycheck in low-wage jobs that all it's going to take with rising rent is one hiccup and her and the kids are out on the streets. We could invest in them. I'd like to talk about the 44% of our children in this city living in poverty. That 1.5 million dollars could be used to lift them out of poverty and give them a We have a moral imperative as a welcoming city to pass a ceasefire resolution to recognize the pain that exists in our city. And if you believe it doesn't, a school bus driver I spoke to recently drives buses with elementary school children. A lot of refugees on that bus and the kids are asking, are you pro-Israel or pro-Palestine? I guess that means one gets to live, one gets to die, one life matters, one life doesn't. Please vote for a ceasefire tonight. Stand for all life.
Thank you.
My name is Shrata Prabhu and I'm a resident of Erie. I'm asking, I'm requesting the Council to support the resolution, to call for a ceasefire. I reside in Erie, but I've been born and brought up in India. And as someone who is born witness to the draconian nature and impact of state-sponsored violence in terms of generations of lives lost and destroyed in my home country, the role of state-sponsored violence in radicalizing those harmed and perpetuating decades of conflict in Kashmir and in the northeast in Gujarat, and that's just, just in India. I urge the Council to pass this resolution calling for a ceasefire. We must be univocal in our condemnation of state-sponsored violence everywhere. Among the black American leaders who have, who have known intimately the repressive power of governments is Angela Davis. I urge we heed to her call for action. Palestine is a moral litmus test for the world. Erie is part of the world, this pale blue dot. Erie is home to people who have lived and continue to live with state-sponsored violence. And I'll leave you with the words of Zora Neale Hurston. If you are silent about your pain, they will kill you and say you enjoyed it. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My name is Cole Shenley and I live in the city of Erie. I'm here tonight to talk about the city's resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza that is on the agenda. The world has watched in horror since the events of October 7th, when close to 1,200 Israelis were murdered by members of the militant Palestinian organization Hamas and the subsequent retaliation by the Israeli government, who have indiscriminately killed nearly 30,000 Palestinians in five months of war. Note that those 30,000 dead Palestinians were not all or even mostly members of Hamas, but in fact were primarily innocent civilians. 12,000 children, 8,000 women, 1,000 elderly, over 300 paramedics and medical staff, 152 UN staff, and over 200 journalists. 69,000 Palestinians have been wounded in the war, with 75% of those wounded being women and children. By any real metric, this is a genocide being carried out by the Israeli government under orders from the Prime Minister of the country, Benjamin Netanyahu. The Netanyahu government is corrupt and far-right wing. The police in Israel have been trying to send this man to jail for years and prior to October 7th, Netanyahu was attempting to undermine and override one of the only internal checks on his power, the Israeli Supreme Court. The much-vaunted "only democracy" in the Middle East has increasingly been under assault by its own politicians, who had hoped to use the war in Gaza as a way of consolidating power. This has spectacularly backfired, with the Israeli GDP contracting 20% in the fourth quarter of 2023, in part because Palestinian laborers have been banned or restricted from their construction jobs. We have seen US politicians afraid to speak out on the genocide in Gaza due to Israel being a client state of our country and a fear of reprisal from right-wing super PACs like AIPAC, an organization that has donated millions of dollars to Republican election deniers running for political office. The time for fear is over. Not as images of Palestinian children with their bodies mutilated by the Israeli army flood the news and social media. It's abhorrent that passing this resolution is at all controversial when the Israeli government and its military are murdering children by the thousands. Hamas took control of the Gaza Strip in 2007, 17 years ago. Half of Gaza's population are under the age of 18, meaning that they've only ever known life under Hamas and under a conservative Israeli government. These children are having their limbs ripped away from their bodies, their family lines decimated, because of decisions in which they have never had a meaningful voice. What happened to Israeli citizens on October 7th was horrific and criminal. It does not, however, justify the mass murder of Palestinian civilians. As Brazilian President Lula da Silva has said, "It's not a war of soldiers against soldiers. It's a war between a highly-prepared army and women and children." I hear over and over again that Israel has a right to defend itself, but what we've seen play out is no proportional response. It's a genocide perpetrated by an apartheid state against a people who have no true rights and a supposed democracy. We have seen the Israeli government massacre not just Muslim Palestinians, but Christian Palestinians. Last October 19th, the Israeli army bombed the church of St. Porfirus, the third oldest Christian church in the world, causing the deaths of 18 people and destroying a portion of the church. People may ask why a city council is being asked to take this issue up. To quote Pittsburgh community organizer Tanisha Long, "When you claim that a ceasefire resolution is not a local issue, you ignore the fact that our tax dollars fund genocide. We need our local governments to push back and send a message to the federal government about where we want our money to go." Currently, Pennsylvania State Treasury has $56 million invested in Israeli bonds, money that is fueling the deaths of thousands of Palestinians. The actions of Hamas do not represent all Palestinians, just as the actions of the Israeli government do not represent all Israelis and especially not all Jews, not as the non-intervention by our federal government, just as the non-intervention by our federal government does not represent all of us. It is in spite of these things that we Americans are called to action to hold our government accountable for its role in the genocide of thousands of Palestinians and to fight for a peaceful end to these atrocities. I stand in solidarity with my comrades in the Democratic Socialists of America, particularly my Jewish comrades and Palestinian comrades and my comrades in Erie County United. We call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and the release of hostages from both Israel and Palestine. Let's support an end to the bloodshed that is occurring and forge a new path of equality and self-determination for all people of the region. I wanted to stop there and I know I have a few more seconds, but I also wanted to point out, this is also a local issue. Seven unions have formed a coalition of nine million workers calling for a ceasefire in America, including our own UE, United Auto Workers, the American Association of Flight Attendants, the National Education Association. There are unions that have called for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jackie Braxton. I'm a resident in Fairview, Pennsylvania. And there's been a lot of passionate speaking tonight. I don't think that what anybody would say up here is going to change anyone's minds. But as a first-generation American, my mother was a survivor of the Holocaust and I know that there are a few members that are sitting out here who are actually Holocaust survivors and also children of Holocaust survivors. I want to talk about some hate. The Jewish population in the world is less than 3.3%, 0.3%. It is not even statistically significant. And yet, 60% of hate crimes are against Jews. There has been a 200% increase in hate crimes in the United States against Jews. We're not that many. And yet, and yet, we can't forget what is being done to us. The resolution, I ask you to table it tonight because of that hate. If you don't pass the resolution, people will still have their opinions and have a way to express their support for a peaceful resolution in their own ways. But if you pass this resolution, you are taking risk to a very small population in Erie County. We already have guards at our services. We already have locks on our doors so that if anybody comes up, they can't just walk in. And that is a result of hate. I grew up in Erie, was born and raised here, I still live here, I raised my kids here. And I have never gone to services with guards guarding the door for as many reasons as we have today. So I am asking you to table this because we have what's called Shalom Bait. That's a Hebrew term that says peaceful house. We want a peaceful Erie and I ask you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susannah Faulkner, City of Erie. There's a lot of pain in the room and I recommend everyone, I know I caught myself not really breathing, so I recommend everyone take a bit of a deep breath, it's a long night. There's a couple of different issues I'm going to speak on tonight that are all interconnected in their own way. First of all, I want to frame everything I'm saying with words that guide all of us from the Declaration of Independence, the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. First, I want to speak on the Fairness Act, also known as Pennsylvania Senate Bill 150. Pennsylvania is one of 28 states that does not enshrine protections for us LGBTQ+ people on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation. This bill was first introduced 24 years ago, when Governor Shapiro was in the House, and the time is now to pass it. Erie is one of the leaders in the Commonwealth, as one of only one out of three counties, out of, I believe, 68, 67, to extend these protections at the county level against discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. Go Erie County. Fortunately, this has already passed the PA House last year, but it now faces a tough battle in the Republican-led PA Senate. Your voice is desperately needed to get this passed. Our state Senator Dan Loughlin needs to hear from our city's leaders like you and all of us. You can send a simple message of support for the Fairness Act to our state senator at dloughlin@pasen.gov or 814-453-2515. Also, in the latest edition of Erie Gay News, there's a whole template for you online and in print for how to do that. Now, why do we need laws like this? Why does this matter? Last year, a national survey by the Trevor Project found that 33% of LGBTQ+ youth have persistent suicidal ideation and depression as a direct response to rising anti-LGBTQ+ policies and legislation. As mentioned earlier, earlier this month, 16-year-old Nex Benedict was murdered at school. They identified as LGBTQ+ and simply were using the school bathroom at their public school in Oklahoma when they were attacked and later pronounced dead from brain trauma. Just like Oklahoma, Pennsylvania similarly lacks anti-discrimination protections for LGBTQ+ individuals. And just like Oklahoma, what happened to Nex will not be charged as a hate crime. In Pennsylvania, anything that is motivated by homophobia, transphobia, is not tried as a hate crime. It is urgent that we pass the Fairness Act and I want a world where young people like Nex get to become adults. And I want the 60,000 children now trapped in Rafa with nowhere to flee to become adults too. These Palestinian families followed Israeli-issued evacuation orders under the false premise that it would be safe. The international organization Save the Children states that nowhere in Gaza is safe for children. How is this all connected? As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said in his letter from Birmingham Jail, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." 85% of Gaza's population have lost their homes and 28,000 have died. And of course, it's not just Palestinians who are suffering. Almost 2,000 Israelis have been killed since the attacks on October 7th. I ask you, I plead to you as someone who values peace above all, to support this resolution calling for a ceasefire. This is a desperate situation with chaos, constant violence, and famine looming. Today, I think of my German-Jewish great-great-grandmother Clara Metzger. If she hadn't immigrated to the United States, I likely wouldn't be here today. And my grandfather, Charlie Catania, a first-generation Italian-American who nobly served in World War II and helped to liberate some of the largest Holocaust concentration camps in Germany. Today, let's stand for peace. Erie City Council, your vote is a sign of your moral compass. And to both our Jewish and Muslim community members, I can only imagine the fear that you both have. I personally offer my time to coordinate any sort of supportive community presence. I understand there's already proper security, but any sort of supportive community presence outside of your places of worship or community centers. There's a beautiful network of peace and mutual aid advocates here in Erie to offer protection and care if welcomed. Thank you, Council, for giving your time to make tough decisions for our community.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Walter Har and my family came here to Erie from the... I'm Walter Harf, and my family came here to Erie from the pre-war Holocaust victims. The passion which I listened to this evening was fantastic because people really care, and that's good. Like all of us, no matter what their religion or political positions are concerned about the welfare of people throughout the world. We're troubled by the extent of the lives lost and the destruction of homes in Israel and in the Hamas conflict. We've witnessed huge increases of demonstrations and council hate throughout the United States. The Council's passing resolution, taking signs in the foreign affairs of America and making statements, and even foster uncharted outbreaks locally. Please place the Erie City Council's concern to addressing global problems as your priority and move forward in that direction. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Maybe.
Dave Genowen, resident of Erie, your favorite disrespectful young person that I've been called before. I'm not going to say much here because the microphone's covered, however, if you want to put in my piece in calling up City Council to vote for a ceasefire. More than 29,000 Palestinians have been killed in what we have called a war, but in reality is an ethnic cleansing. Jewish hate and antisemitism is real in Erie, in America, and all throughout the world. Calling for a ceasefire does not make you antisemitic. It makes you anti-Zionist. If you aren't sure what those words mean, please pay the well-paid sociology class or the free board. The war did not start on October 7th. As many have said here tonight, it has been ongoing for decades and has taken an increasing genocidal turn since October 7th. That date was not the beginning of the war, but rather the beginning of the end of the war turned genocide. You need to choose what side you want to be on. You're all able to sit up here on your phones, shuffling through papers, refilling your drinks, while your constituents are begging you to do the right thing. The least you can do is hear the authority and vote for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go GM, we're here. Looking forward to this holy ceremony, Senator. City Council, getting taken care of, global stuff, the finish, the mission. There's a slaughter going on. There's a slaughter going on over there. 90% of the countries in the world believe there's a slaughter going on here. 100% of the humanitarian organizations in the world believe there's a slaughter going on over there. And I, for one, maybe this won't do any good, just like me being out in the street for the last seven years, I felt like that doesn't do any good because people don't give a damn. They do call it in their own lives, and I'm going to speak to motivation about that in a minute. There's a slaughter going on over there against all humanitarian laws, international law. That's what this is about. I mean, that's the bottom line anyway. That's what we should be acknowledging anyway, what the world is saying about this, what the United Nations is saying, what Israel has agreed to, what we've agreed to, and what complicit. They wouldn't be able to do this without the United States. And I'll tell you one more thing. Joe Biden will not get my vote during the primary, and I'm hoping that I won't have to vote for him in the general election. And then, what's the dang matter for Senate? Casey will not get my vote in the primary. And I'm hoping I don't have to. That's hoping against hope, basically. But this is the time, let me put this out there, this is the time for third-party candidates and independents to get some, if they get some money, to get in this race for president, for Senate, whatever. And there's some word here in the last week that maybe for one reason or another, Joe Biden will end up not being in the race, and maybe Donald Trump. For the, maybe if you're paying attention to news, you know the obvious reasons for each one. But that's really not something to rely on. So maybe a Democrat who's had the guts and the conscience to get on board with the ceasefire might get in there and be all for it. Because I'm basically, I get, yeah, I get a vote for anybody in the Republicans, I might go and sell something. Okay, let's get to the motivation. This is the problem this country brings. The problem of this country is we don't realize that what we sow, and you all heard this, you hear it every week on the news, somebody says this, somebody records this, we don't realize that what we sow, we reap. If we don't vote conscientiously within reason about how to, you know, how to address the government, it's coming back on us. It's not just coming back on our kids. We should be motivated by that. We should be motivated by our grandkids, by what's coming back on us. What's coming back on us too. And if you don't believe in that, maybe you ought to get a little bit more deep about what life and existence is about, about what the after-death itself is all about. And if you think that the blood of Christ is going to save, you need to read the Bible again. Because the blood of Christ does not save rebellious people unless they repent. And you have no guarantee of that. Nobody has a guarantee of that. And I'm not even a Bible believer in any serious way, even though I have a good background and I highly respect. But what we sow is what we reap. And we're never going to get this thing together in this country, in this world, until we come to grips with there are, we don't escape. And watch Donald Trump, for example. Watch how he was. Because that God, in my opinion, has put, blocked out maybe for us to have a shining example of someone who is reaping right now what he's sowing. And I'll tell you right now, Joe Biden hasn't, there's not a lot of distance between my opinion between Joe Biden and him. Maybe he's conscientious towards it somewhere who isn't. But he's, 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 he can stop this slaughter. And I don't know why he isn't. Maybe he's just old school, and he has to go with the old-school way of thinking. Or maybe he's in bed with APAC or somebody else, I don't know.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? Do we have any citizens who would like to be heard? Last call. Do we have any citizens who would like to be heard? I hear none. Go ahead, Lori.
We have no ordinances for final passage. Ordinances for first reading, Council File Number 16420, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,400 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution from FEMA 2022 assistance to firefighters grant for seven thermal imaging cameras, sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Shaw. The Council File Ordinance Number 16420 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Tru, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance Number 16420 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading.
Do I have a motion to move the balance?
I gotta do a little business.
Oh, okay, sorry.
A resolution sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Shaw pursuant to the provisions of PA 47, PS 4461, proper legal advertising. City Council had a public, held a public hearing on Wednesday, February 7th, 2024, approximately 9:30 a.m., regarding a request for waterfront conditionally used submitted by property owners David and Donna Ruh for construction of a one-family dwelling located at 917 West Front Street, Erie, PA. This resolution be hereby approved. Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Tru, Witherspoon, Flores. Resolution passes, yea seven, nay zero.
All righty, now do I have a motion to move the balance?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Tyler, thank you.
Can you get a second?
Tyler.
Any separations?
One.
Anyone else?
Any other separations?
I hear none. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, I'd like to note that on Resolution Number Three, the Erie 21st Century Development locating a bakery sign on Fifth Street, it's not just a bakery. Moving to balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Shaw, Nelson, Titus, Tru, Witherspoon, and Flores. Resolution passes, yea seven, nay zero. New business. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, whereas the ongoing conflict in Israel and Palestine has resulted in an immense loss of life, suffering, and destruction, whereas it is imperative to prioritize the safety and well-being of civilians in times of conflict. Whereas a ceasefire is essential to provide humanitarian relief, access to medical aid, and ensure the protection of civilian infrastructure. Whereas a cessation of hostilities is necessary to create conditions conducive to dialogue and negotiation towards a lasting peace agreement. Whereas as a city committed to promoting peace and justice, it is our responsibility to advocate for an end to violence and peaceful resolution to conflicts worldwide. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Erie, that the City Council hereby calls for immediate ceasefire in Israel and Palestine to halt the loss of civilian lives and alleviate the suffering of innocent people caught in the conflict. The City Council urges the release of all hostages, protections of civilians, the adherence to international humanitarian law, and the delivery of humanitarian aid to those in need. City Council recognizes each party's right to exist in the ancestral homes of their respective faiths. We reject the calls for destruction of either faith or ethnic group. City Council expresses its support for diplomatic efforts aimed at achieving a comprehensive and sustainable peace agreement in the region. City Council reaffirms its commitment to promoting peace, justice, and human rights both locally and globally, and pledges to continue advocating for peaceful solutions to conflicts worldwide. The City Clerk is directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to elected representatives and governmental bodies to express the City Council's stance on the matter. Discussion?
Madam President.
Go ahead, Nelson.
Usually, this discussion is a good time to try to make everybody happy. I'm pretty sure my comments will actually disappoint everyone based on the comments from the public today. So that's probably some pretty bad politics. I heard from one side that they would like to see a ceasefire, and that's been requested of us for a number of meetings now. Last meeting, I made it clear that I did not intend to sponsor such a resolution. I think that by bringing this here today, as we read a resolution asking to bring peace into the world, that we gave a platform for the expression of anger tonight, and that we did not bring peace into our community with this. However, to the other side that would like to see a table to not vote it on, I will not be making you happy today either, because I think the most prudent thing to do with this being a public resolution at this point is to vote on it. While I was given some credit earlier, I did not sponsor it, I did offer some amendments. One was that the object of this was Gaza, and that that was changed to Israel and Palestine to make it a more balanced resolution, to recognize this conflict is between both bodies. Second thing I did was I'd asked that we consider changing the second point to include the release of all hostages, because that's a particular issue, especially to our Jewish brothers and sisters here today. And then I also had asked for point number three to be added, that City Council recognizes each party's right to exist in the ancestral homes of their respective faiths, and then we call for the, we reject the calls for destruction of either faith or ethnic group. Those were the things that I thought made it to a point that it is an appropriate and balanced ceasefire that does not lean too heavily on either group. But I still, I do not think that this brought peace into the world. Those that need the peace right now will not be hearing this message, and I believe that after listening to you all for the last two and a half hours, that the platform we gave to anger today was not healthy for our community.
Any other discussions?
Yeah, I'll say something.
Go ahead.
Mr. Nelson very well said. In caucus, I said that I didn't feel that this is something that a City Council should be dealing with. This is emotionally packed, I mean, really emotionally packed. Folks were talking, and their voices were breaking, and we're missing the whole point. Nobody wants to see anybody die. If we're going to do something with something like this as a resolution, we should have two things on it. Mr. Nelson brought the one, as far as freeing all hostages immediately and seeking the surrender of Hamas. Hamas is gone, we have the hostages back, we have, I think we have everything back. But what we're going to do tonight, I have to agree with Mr. Nelson, I'm open to do it, but it hasn't brought our community together. It's divided the community, it's hurt a lot of people, and it hurt me too. And like I said, I'm going to be a no, I'm going to try to table it, but that's not the answer. I have to be honest, like I always try to be with you folks. If I thought it belonged here, I would be all for it. I love the outpouring of love that so many folks gave today. I wish everybody understood that it's not that simple. If the guys around the world can't get together and solve this thing, all we're going to do is drive a wedge into what we don't want wedged bigger. I'm sorry, I'm going to be a no vote on this. I was going to try to table it, but I'm sure we don't have a table.
Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Madam President, go ahead.
Mel, you can go first. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think the move in the House tonight, as well as members of Council, is to seize fire, stop the fighting, stop the killing. I mean, stop. The resolution is not going to do that. Washington haven't been able to do it yet. We have one side versus the other. What I'm concerned about is how the resolution itself will cause separation in our city and our Jewish community. Mr. Harf, who I've known for over 50 years, has worked in the community, and specifically the Jewish community. If my former roommate was still alive, Mike Levine, I have no idea where his ancestry lies in this situation, and it didn't make a hell of a difference to me. I didn't need to know that. I'm concerned about Erie, Pennsylvania. I feel... If my former roommate was still alive, Mike Levine, I have no idea where his ancestry lies in this situation. And it didn't make a hell of a difference to me. I didn't need to know that. I'm concerned about Erie, Pennsylvania. I feel very bad about the children. If anyone know me, the kids come first to me, because they are the future. Unfortunately, so many are gone, their future is gone. War is dirty, war is nasty.
So the genocide?
Okay, enough.
I agree with you, sir. Soul was hanging blacks, sir. That wasn't right here. So I will vote no, simply because I don't see where it's going to start. Deal with Erie's problem? I'm all for it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Tyler, do you want to comment?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I've rolled around quite a bit of what I wanted to say. It's changed quite a bit. I reject the notion that this body is incapable of understanding nuance. I reject that it's not our responsibility, and I reject that this has caused division. I think the voices that we've heard tonight shows that the division and the hurt and the pain has been here before this resolution was brought before us, and that conversations around this much pain and this much hurt and this much disruption are going to be intense, and they're going to be passionate, because we're talking about humans. We're talking about human beings. This resolution was not one, and I've been accused of being anti-Semitic. I've been accused of purposely trying to create a show that I've been trying to just join the hype. There is no hype around thirty thousand people dying. There's no, this is not to create a center or a focus. This is to acknowledge that we have people in our community who are being impacted by this. And we can stay silent, we can stay silent, and we cannot pass. But that makes us complicit, and it makes us a part of the problem, because problems don't go away just when we don't name them. I bring this forward in good faith. I bring this forward as an elected who is entrusted to go into the difficult conversations, and into the painful conversations, and to represent multiple perspectives. That's why I brought this resolution forward. And I was warned that what would unfold tonight. And I did it because my moral compass, and I did it because it was the right and the just thing to do. So that's why I put this resolution forward. That's all I'll say.
Do I have any other council members who would like to comment? Go ahead.
Thank you. My heart is breaking for all of us, and all of us in our community. And I would hope that nobody retaliates against anyone. If you want to read something, it's a short read, All the Things I Learned, or All the Things I Know I Learned in Kindergarten, by Robert Fulgham. It's a great read. I just don't like war at all. I wouldn't have some grandchildren or my son-in-law today. My son-in-law was a Marine, and his friend, knowing that he had a wife and child, took a bullet for him and saved my son-in-law's life. I just want peace in our world and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you Cathy. Councilmember Mo, do you have anything you would like to add?
Council President, I don't have any comments right now.
Alright, I would just like to make a comment that I was the second who sponsored Tyler's resolution, and I did this because for weeks we have been hearing community members reaching out, asking for us to do something in response to what's going on. Once you have a second, then you bring the resolution up for a vote, which is why we moved to make this vote happen, just so we can see where everyone else felt. At the moment, a lot of people were in favor of it. I don't know if that has changed, given all the testimony we've heard tonight. I feel like my mic might have went out, but I'm not quite sure. Okay, there we go. So with that being said, I am not in favor of war. I have a partner who, he was a Marine in the Iraqi war, and he tells me continuously of all the abandoned orphaned children who were left in the desert, hungry, scavenging. And those children became angry adults. Now for me, I think of the children who become angry adults. What will these angry adults do to us if we do not make a stance on where we stand today? I understand that this is an issue that will make a lot of people feel a certain type of way, but when you have a moral compass to sit here and make decisions for the body of all, we have multiple different community members in our community, a lot of different people from different backgrounds. I'm half Mexican, half Puerto Rican, and my people were displaced by war as well. A lot of our ancestors were displaced by war. So I hope that enough people have compassion and understanding that just because we're not directly impacted, we cannot sit back and wait for it to happen to others. I hope that when we call the vote, we will see how it goes, and go from there. I have no other comments. I don't think any other council members do either. So Lori, call the vote.
Councilmember Brzezinski?
No.
Councilmember Nelson? Shaw? Titus? Tru?
No.
Witherspoon?
No.
Flores. Resolution passes ye seven, eight, three.
Order, guys, thank you.
Madam President, this takes us to committee review.
Alrighty, I've been starting on the end with Councilmember Brzezinski, so I'm going to start on the end with Councilmember Witherspoon today, and we'll go straight through. We can wait until they disperse, if you would like. No rush. Can you please put the signs down? Can you, Joe, can you please put the sign down? Or we will have to have you removed unfortunately. Alrighty, Mel, I think that's going to be as quiet as it's going to get.
Thank you, Madam President. No report?
No report, alrighty.
Alright, I will try to go through my report quickly. Met with the Parking Authority Board on two thirteen twenty-four. There are several projects, renovation projects underway in different lots across the city, including updating to energy-efficient lighting, which is going to be a savings in approximately...
Can you please close the door?
Approximately forty percent in overhead because of the energy-efficient lighting that they're doing and some of the other things. I've received many complaints, and I'm advocating, just so people know, around consumer frustration with the app, and the struggles around parking. So that is something that we are all working on as council. But to, they did note at the last board meeting that revenue has increased with the implementation of the app versus the metered parking. And there was a request, and I had spoke with the mayor's administration briefly during the meeting with the directors. There seems to be some confusion on, or stuck point about getting the signage up, is regarding just how to pay with the app. I don't know where it's stuck, and whose ball the court is in, but I just thought I would kind of put that out there. Met with the communications team on two nine twenty-four to get an overview of the work that's being completed there. Got to see a sneak preview of the new website that's coming in the not-so-distant future. I think it's, it looks great. It's going to be much more user-friendly, and there's going to be, you know, an additional emphasis on creating a more accessible way for Erie residents to find out things that are coming up. And not to forget that the stormwater fees are due, and that residents need to be sure that they are paying their 2023 fees in addition to their 2024 fees. You can come in and pay directly here in person, or you can go online. I have a meeting tomorrow with EMTA. They had a board meeting, I wasn't able to attend. I'll be attending the one on two twenty-six to learn more about, and I'll be able to report out next time. And then I met with the executive director of the Civil Human Relations Commission. That person and their civil rights investigator are relatively new to that position, so they're still trying to put all the data and the trends together. So if anybody needs to use their services, you can find more information on the county website. They are located in the Renaissance Center. And then lastly, I have a meeting with the executive director of the Erie Zoo, which I am very much looking forward to on Monday, and I will report on that one at the next meeting.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Mel?
Council President, I have no official report, but I do want to say, I don't think our, I think, I'll use Councilman Titus's. I reject the notion that the vote shows the amount of compassion or moral compass. I definitely reject that. Because I look at it, I'm going to use Councilman Witherspoon, who's shown more compassion to community than him for the last thirty-five, forty years. You know, I mean, if you look at his body of work compared to others, I mean, if we want to do that. I just don't think that's a good idea to put those type of statements out. Who cares more, who doesn't care more? I just don't think it's a good idea. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Alrighty, Councilmember Nelson?
Yesterday was a planning commission meeting. They voted on some amendments to the short-term rentals. So that's going to be coming our way shortly. There's been a lot of discussion around issues of implementation with that since we passed that ordinance last year. I want to bring something up for the sake of council. I would like to invite someone from the Jefferson to provide a presentation next council meeting. Something that we've been talking about in a lot of different contexts is Home Rule Charter. And it seems that most of the members of council have some idea as to what that would look like. But I think that if we were to very seriously pursue a Home Rule Charter, that we would need help outside of this governing body. And I would like to approach the Jefferson to maybe provide some of the academic type of support to justify a potential move there. I think it may come down, I think we may have to use a little bit of our professional services potentially. But I think this is potentially the most impactful thing we can do as a city. Something, frankly, our Home Rule Charter is written during a Jim Crow era. I mean, there's a whole bunch of suburban sprawl and white flight that was occurring, that was being accommodated by it. There's a number of creative avenues that other cities have been able to do to help the, you know, as Ed always talks about, the little old lady on her fixed income with the big property tax bills we provide. So I hope that City Council will take some time this year to reflect on the possibility of that. And I would like to invite Furkey into, to talk to us next council meeting, and maybe present what they might be able to do to help us move this city forward in a pretty dynamic decision.
Thank you. Cathy?
Thank you, Ms. President. Mr. Witherspoon and I spent last Friday, February ninth, up in room five hundred, listening to CBDG, presenters of nonprofits apply for their programs. There's going to be a public hearing for that March fourth, I think it is, and that will be here in the chambers. I went to the zoning board meeting, and there is a twenty-unit multifamily dwelling that is going to be done in the old Triangle Tech Building at the twenty-hundred block of Liberty with Leon Commercial Leasing. And it's going to have twenty total units in various different sizes, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and two studios. So that's wonderful that they're going to restore that building that was empty for a while. I attended the blighted property meeting with Ms. Flores, and from what I could see, that the homes they showed, and I drive by them, definitely met the criteria of blighted homes. I went to the Grassroots Coalition meeting, February fifteenth. I highly recommend that you go to this type of meetings because our DA is there. She is wonderful, she listens to the people. We have a police officer there, and another officer with the county DA's office. And I witnessed firsthand how important it is to have someone translate. There was a woman who had an incident. She lives behind, in that area where the quality of life is, and she was able to speak to the officer and our DA because of, through translation, the translator. And it's wonderful to hear that the Burton School was sold and will be repurposed pre-K through twelve years old, and they're looking for anchor tenants there to develop their own space as well. I attended the Water Authority meeting and the Sewer Authority, and the Sewer Authority has an issue with their junction to and flow issues there. They're going to look into having that repaired, to find out why they're having low-flow issues. And they do have some concerns with other things, and perhaps a study session in the future. Because the sewer and the water, they have to send out all of their reports to meet the federal guidelines, the EPA, and they have to do that. I mean, the reports are very important. So all of those pipes and things at both of the plants, the water and the sewer, it's costly. So you have to upgrade. It's just like upgrading your home. If you don't do anything about it, it goes into blight, and then is no longer livable. And we need a strong sewer system that is clean and healthy as well as the Water Authority, too. So Wesleyville and Lawrence Park... So Wesleyville and Lawrence Park had their lead lines cleaned up. And there's a lot of necessary things going on in both of those. So you can attend those meetings. I see Mr. Kissel at them all the time. So if you're interested in that sort of thing, listen. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brzezinski?
Yes. I'm pleased to say we can end the committee reports with a very nice thing. Port Authority, Mayor Shimer, you were patted on the back for being very helpful with our staff. The police chief, fire chief, I gotta mention Russo because he's involved in that. This April, I think everybody knows about the eclipse. A lot of it's gonna take place right on our bayfront. And you can imagine just how much work is gonna go into this to make sure that everybody's working together. And from the Port Authority, they said it's like a hand in the glove, just coming together. It's a lot of work and a lot more work to do. But the fact that everybody is reaching out and working together is gonna make this a success. All we gotta do is break the clean, clear the skies so we can see the thing. But that's all I have there, is kudos to the guys that are doing the extra job and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go last. I attended, through Zoom, so I watched through Facebook, the three o'clock Erie Redevelopment Authority Board Meeting on February 12, which was a Monday. I also attended the Blighted Property Meeting on February 14 with Councilmember Kathy. And then to also mention, the solar eclipse is going to be taking place on April 8. We are expecting influx of visitors of up to sixty thousand people. So it's going to be happening between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. So they anticipate the gridlock to get out of downtown is going to be very, very hard, and it's gonna take a few hours. So anticipate that during your day of travel. And then I also wanted to just put out there that I've noticed on the news, there's been quite a few house fires and abandoned buildings. That's alarming, considering how close our houses are together. And it seems like it's homeless people breaking in and starting fires to keep warm. I just want residents to be very aware of what's going on in your neighborhood and the houses that are close to you. If you smell something, if you see something, please make sure you're doing your due diligence to report it before it becomes a big problem. Just because if there's something you can prevent next door, then definitely, please do take the time to do that because nobody is anticipating a fire can cause damage to the neighboring houses, but it definitely can. That's, we also have a study session tomorrow at 5:30 here in Chambers with Donald Crenshaw for a report on his Royal Homes Initiative. So that'll be nice. But that's pretty much all I have to report. I don't think... Yes, go ahead.
If I may, I forgot a big one. Police Athletic League is having their annual ball Saturday night up at the Ambassador. They put on a pretty nice ending, they tell me, because I'm gonna go and find out.
Well, I will see you there.
All right.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I forgot to mention that there's an art show this weekend at the Erie Women's Club that's on the corner of Sixth and Chestnut. And if you've never been inside a mansion before, it is a nice opportunity to look at the art that will be there. It's from 1:00 until 3:00 on Saturday and Sunday, which is also during the winter carnival downtown, too. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mel?
I forgot to mention that the PAL, Police Athletic League and Spoons League are joining up this summer through basketball in another attempt to save our youth. So I'm pleased about that, and PAL is happy and gonna make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitor, do you have a report? Nothing? Mayor, do you have a report?
This will be very brief. I just wanna mention a couple of things. One is, back from February 5, on February 5 and February 6, we had a series of meetings with people that have applied for our CDBG or home grants. And they probably potentially applied for like three times the amount that we're gonna get. But, and I know that Kathy Schaff and Mel came to one of the meetings on Friday. And so, good conversations, and we don't know yet how much money we're gonna get. But, you know, we will do the best we can with that. On Friday, the 16th, we swore in two groups of new Americans. It's the first time since I've been here that we've done two on one day. And we thought it was gonna be about a hundred, almost fifty in each group. But the first group, for some reason, was very small. Nobody could explain why. We had a lot of extra stuff to give away that we couldn't. There was only twenty-seven in the first group. Second group was, again, in the high forties, so... But it was good to do the two, and that was pretty successful. Also, yesterday, I went to the Erie Sewer Authority Board Meeting. I think Kathy was there at that as well, and you talked about that a little bit. It was amazing to me how much they're working on. I just couldn't get over it. In fact, it's supposed to be an hour meeting. Started at 11:00. I had to leave at 12:15 because I'd be back here for a 12:30 meeting, and they were still going. But it was pretty amazing as well. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. And I believe that takes us to the end of the meeting. Meeting adjourned.